Okay. We will call to order the March 1st, 2023, meeting of the Norfolk School Committee. We will begin each meeting as we always do by reading our mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnership, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Lisa Sheldon.
Sarah Ward.
Shannon Manessis.
Madora Champagne.
Mary Necto.
Amy Lardy.
Okay. So, as always, the first item on our agenda is public comment, during which any member of the public can comment on anything within the purview of the school committee. So, I am looking inquisitively at the audience and seeing no one springing up, so I'm assuming we have no one for public comment. Moving on to correspondence, also a quick one because I believe we have none? Is that accurate?
None tonight.
None tonight? Great. So subsequently would be the school committee chair report. I have no major items to report since our last meeting, so we are going to roll right into the superintendent's report. Okay? Take it away.
All right. And we are starting our meeting tonight with an update from AI3, who has been working with us on the feasibility study for the potential Freeman Kennedy School Expansion Project. They were here at the last meeting and provided you with the, an update on the, sort of the long-term plan, the timeline, the dates, and work that has happened underway. Since that time, we are meeting weekly with the working group in the district and with AI3 to provide feedback on plans and designs and questions that come up. And they have a more comprehensive presentation for you tonight that will include preliminary design possibilities for the Freeman Kennedy School, some additional information on the potential layout of the outside space, traffic, things like that. So, I'll turn it over to AI3. You have to talk at the mic so that they can capture you on cable.
Thank you, Dr. Lardy. So, welcome, everyone. My name is Justin Tebow, a principal at AI3. With me is Troy Randall, one of the partners at AI3, and Ashley Cullion, the landscape architect from Traverse Landscape Architects. So, tonight, quick schedule overview, couple reminder slides, refresher slides from last meeting, a brief discussion about HOD, but really what we wanted to do is focus on the Freeman Kennedy Project. It was asked last time about floor plans. What, we're going to show you some preliminary floor plans tonight and sort of how the building sort of lays out, as well as Ashley will go through some of the site plans. So, jumping into it, maybe? Okay. Okay. Same schedule as shown before. Couple of quick modifications I wanted to flag. Town, the town meeting was shifted from May 9th to 17th, so that's reflected on this overall schedule. And then additionally, all of the items that have been completed were already in March 1st, so all the other items have been sort of grayed out moving forward. One item I wanted to flag here, upcoming on March 14th, is the first community forum. I'll talk a little bit more about that at the very end, but really that is a chance to allow a venue for the community to provide feedback, comments, and questions to, to the entire team. So, other than that, nothing else has changed. As Dr. Lardy mentioned, we're meeting frequently for the working group to progress the project forward. So, quick refresher enrollments, really focusing on the five-year projection, that is the most accurate. So, looking at grades three through six for the Freeman Kennedy, targeting 688 students. HOD K through two is the 461, and then that pre-K component. Right now, the projections are for 64, but understanding there's a large waitlist, the targeted capacity for pre-K is 105 for that component that is going to be shifted up to the Freeman Kennedy site. Another review slide really quick. I mentioned last time there are really three buckets of categories for spaces. So, the first being spaces previously lost, just to meet the current enrollment needs. So, that is moving teacher rooms, moving the music and art, stuff like that. Second bucket is the spaces that are freed up at HOD by pulling that pre-K component to Freeman Kennedy. And then the third bucket is just the new spaces required to support the increased enrollment in general. So, additional classrooms, additional special education spaces, and all of the support required for, for the increased enrollment. So, real quick, we'll briefly talk about HOD, and then we'll really focus on Freeman Kennedy. So, HOD, what you will see next time is an updated floor plan with what these spaces could be utilized as. So, once pre-K vacates HOD, that frees up some rooms, obviously. And what we've been going through with the district at the last working group meeting and what we're going to continue discussions with is what can those spaces be used for? So, really on the left here is identifying the roadmap of where those spaces sort of fill in. So, we're targeting eight kindergarten classrooms, seven first-grade classrooms, and nine second-grade classrooms, and that's based on the enrollment projections, five years out. We're also looking at taking back the music space, the maker space, the teacher work room and planning, all the spaces that were previously lost. So, those will then become, they will have homes again and be reintroduced into, into the school, including the appropriate quantity of special education spaces globally. And then also, one thing for, for school design is really looking at it from a big picture, reorganizing the, the structure, the entire building per grade level. So, creating classroom or grade-level neighborhoods, allowing peers to be adjacent to their immediate same-age-level peers, really creating a sense of community and group within the bigger school. And you'll see similar to what's done here with grades three and four over in that wing, grades five and six over in that wing, really looking at organizing the school per grade level. So, we'll roll out a plan next, at the next meeting, really what can those freed-up, vacated spaces be utilized for? Again, no construction over there, it's more of a scheduling, programming shift, but to give everybody a sense of what could happen at HOD. So, now on to Freeman Kennedy. What you have on the screen and what is in your packet is what is called a space summary. And this is actually a requirement for the MSBA. However, designers utilize it globally, not just for MSBA projects, but for other projects as well, like yours here. What it is, is it's an inventory of all of the spaces within the school. So, on the left side, it identifies the space, whether it's a classroom, or an OT space, or an office, or whatever it may be. Moving over towards the right, it says the size of the space, it says the quantity of the space, and then it creates a tabulation at the bottom of adding all of these spaces up. What is the, the total of all of these columns? So, by doing this, and this was a review from the 2019 expansion study. So, real quick, this was completed in 2019. What we did was through the work that was discussed last time, the visioning sessions, the working group sessions, we reconfirmed that it was accurate. There have been some changes and shifts based on enrollment projections, as well as based on the delivery method, special education population, and so forth. So, there were some modifications from the 2019 initial study. And what you see that is circled in the green, both the right columns, that is what we are currently proposing. So, bottom line, total, total building floor area is just over 36,000 square feet, and that encompasses all of the program spaces to address the increased enrollment. That includes the space to, to move the pre-K component up to Freeman Kennedy, and that includes all of the support spaces, the special education spaces, and all of that needed for, to support the program. So, what this document does is it then becomes almost our roadmap of what spaces are in the floor plans. So, we take that inventory list and we start using that to really influence what the floor plans look like. So, this is the first floor plan. Next slide's the second floor plan. I'll go through them quickly. Actually, we'll talk about the site plan, and then we can come back to these specifically just to give everybody an overall sense. So, what you have here is, is a little bit of a hybrid. Obviously, the existing Freeman Kennedy is basically from here over, and the new expansion project is over here in sort of the yellow and the purplish color. So, real quick, talking about the green spaces first, within the existing facility. I mentioned back at HOD that sort of for the, the classroom reconfiguration per grade level, looking at that as a, as a global, at the global level, we actually did that as well at Freeman Kennedy. So, we looked at where it made sense for adjacencies to be next to, not just in the new addition, but globally. Because of the increased enrollment, rooms have been changed, moved, modified, if there's a free room, people are moving in, stuff like that. So, by looking at it globally, we're able to make some shifts. For instance, this room right down here is currently a special education room. We're proposing on making it a general classroom and relocating that special education component to a more, a more supportive and a more sort of inclusive layout and organization to support the entire population that it serves. So, those are the green spaces. Looking at the other spaces here, and I'm actually going to zoom in because it's a little bit difficult to read. So, starting at the top, working down. Again, we have stairs flanking both sides to provide easy access, both top and bottom. Working our way down, we have three pre-K classrooms, one, two, and three, in the yellow, and those are assigned currently right now for the full-day program. That can change, it's just what is configured right now. Continuing to move down, we have, we have a hallway down real quick. So, that's on the top side. Bottom side, we have four pre-K classrooms. And then, in the center right here, this bluish-purplish space is the pre-K, the multipurpose play and sensory breakout space that supports the pre-K component. Over here, we have the pre-K admin, the pre-K special education, the pre-K nurse, really sort of their control, their administration suite area. What you can see with this big green arrow, this becomes the pre-K entrance into their wing of the building. It'll be isolated with doors and access points on both ends to, to, to address access from like the third graders or the fifth graders wanting to merge into the pre-K. There still will be access, but it'll be locked. But really, this becomes the pre-K entrance, flanked with the administration for pre-K and then the other support spaces. Each pre-K classroom will have their own assigned toilet, as you can see here with all of the blue bubbles adjacent. And then one thing that this really does, so, we looked at initially just going straight across from wing to wing, but based on the program needs, it didn't quite fit. So, that's where this arc started to come from. By actually creating the faceted arc, the three-piece, one here, one in the center, one at the top, it actually creates a lot of interest, and it really starts to make that hallway dynamic. It allows for opportunities for us to really look at these engaging and interactive zones, both here and here, sort of where the building starts to facet. So, it's not just a double-loaded corridor, it really becomes an active space to, to invigorate and to excite the students within that space. So, that is the first floor. We will go up to the second floor now. And again, green spaces are just relocation. For instance, we have speech office, adjustment counselor, psychologist relocated over to the central wing to really centralize themselves to, to serve the entire student population and not be nestled within one wing. So, zooming in on the addition, again, we'll just start at the top, work our way down. So, we're going to look at it from an outer ring and an inner ring. The outer ring is where the six classrooms are located, six general education classrooms. Directly in the middle is the teacher planning space. So, that is the space that is actually currently lost. It's really small, it's undersized, you can't even fit a full grade level of teachers in that space. So, this will give them the appropriate space to collaborate, not only within grade level, but outside of grade level. There'll be a conference room in there as well to support their data meetings that occur. So, that'll be centrally located to really become the anchor and sort of the center point within the academic portion of the new addition. Located on the inner, the inner arc here, starting at the top, we have the art classroom with the kiln. We've actually relocated the art classroom to this portion. That way, we can properly design it with the venting of the kiln. Additionally, what this does is by moving the art classroom over to here, it allows really a creative wing for STEM and STEAM. So, we're pairing it with the maker-builder space, as well as the STEAM space, providing access both from the corridor into the room, but also between these rooms, really utilizing all three of these spaces here as collaborative and multifaceted spaces that are fully flexible and really can allow multiple groups and different sizes of groups to come together and work on projects of different scope. So, that's what these three spaces are here, and then this space down here is a special education space to support the fifth and sixth-grade wing at the bottom. So, that's the general organization of the, the new addition on the second floor. And again, you can see it's a little bit smaller than the first floor, which is good in a lot of ways. What that does is that it actually scales down the building for the smallest of your kids. So, as they're entering, they're entering towards a one-story building, not a two-story wall within that space. Also, reducing costs, trying to minimize how big this building actually is. So, that is the, the second floor. Actually, turn it over to Ashley now to talk the site plan.
So, as AI3 has been working on the organization of the interior spaces, we've been doing the same exact thing with the exterior, understanding what those program requirements are, and then how best they're going to get applied to the site. So, we actually started with three options, and after the most recent user group meeting, had some really great feedback and I think direction, which has helped us get to this latest refinement, which is still at a high level, but I think starting to suggest some pieces in a more realistic fashion. So, some of the big elements that we're looking at are parking, drop-off for pre-K, play, and then also outdoor learning and outdoor education spaces. I think the drop-off was one of the biggest elements we learned about in the last meeting and how that actually works. So, what we found is it's actually pretty fluid in the sense that parents drive up, they drop off, and it's a really quick transition out of the car, so parents need a way to just get in and out very quickly. So, this drop-off scenario works well in that sense, where cars can pull in, you drop off really proximal to that new pre-K entrance, and then you can circle back out through the parking lot and go east or west to the site. We also started speaking about parking spaces. So, we know we'll need new parking spaces to relate to the added student body, as well as new staff. Currently, by code, you only need about 21. This parking lot is actually oversized slightly to about 43, and that was a number that I think at the last working group meeting, we all felt a little bit more comfortable with getting more parking spaces back here for use. The next piece we started to speak to was play, and that starts to get really exciting. But one of the biggest, I think, pieces of where play gets placed is how you can have great connections to the building, but then also require no crossing of vehicular traffic. So, where this play area is spaced is really great. It's proximal to the building, great access, but you could actually fence this entire piece and have no worries or concerns that a student is going to run out into the street. So, that's great. Pre-K play is regulated by size, it's 75 square foot for student. Right now, we're assuming around 50 students or less out at the play area at each time, and there's more than ample space to accommodate that and actually more. So, the exciting pieces will be to better understand how you get to start to break that space up. Is it all active play? Is it some more sensory learning opportunities like you hear, see here? But that's pieces you'll dig into a little bit later. Outdoor classrooms also really important. There's space for an outdoor classroom here that's located really close to the building, again, without necessitating any crossings of vehicular traffic. And then as we start to go into the interior of the courtyard, we started to look at how can we keep some of the bio-retention area? How can we keep some of the bones of the courtyard, but then maybe improve some spaces? You know, emphasizing more outdoor classroom areas with integrated vegetable gardens and making that work for the entire school, as well as looking at some plaza spaces, too, that could be a little bit more flexible in use. The one last piece in terms of access was maintaining this access point or this access road around the school, but not really allowing parents to cross through there, which is something that is not advisable and I think wanted by the school now. So, that's where we came from the last meeting, and we think that was some really great marching orders, and I think this is believable for trying, and certainly this will teach. Are there any questions? Turn it over to Justin to speak more to the building.
Yeah. And I think we can open it up now, talk about floor plans and play plan, and then we can close that with what our next steps are. So, we can open up the questions right away.
Justin, I just wanted to clarify, when you were looking at the floor plans for the second floor, just for the viewing audience at home who may not have been part of the working group sessions, the creative wing that we're talking about will house the art room, the maker space, and when you say steam room, it would be similar to what we used to have, which was a science lab. Those are all spaces that existed in the current Freeman, but will be relocated. A year ago, we lost the science lab and it was converted to a classroom. So, just so people know, this isn't a whole new section, it is reclaiming a dedicated space as a science or steam lab, which we used to have and had to give up for enrollment, and then relocating the current maker space and art room to, again, allow us to have grade level wings and, and classrooms clustered in order to promote student engagement and, and neighborhood areas for students. So, thank you. Any questions? We had a lot of feedback at the last working group for the landscape. So, again, we have an existing courtyard, we've really been looking at what's used and what's not, and when we fully enclose it, some changes have to be made anyway. So, we're looking at how to maximize the, the return on that space as well.
Questions, comments, anyone? Just, sorry. It is pretty. For the viewing public, again, who maybe wasn't watching last time, this 36,000 square-foot number, that, the original number was higher, the proposal, is that accurate? So, this has been reduced from what was originally proposed at the behest of, I think, everyone who was involved. AI3 went back and, and managed to create some efficiencies in the space to save almost 10% of the square footage. So, just, again, for the viewing public, our, our thousands of adoring fans, I want them to be aware of that.
I think the, I think the, the biggest thing that we wanted to, to communicate, again, is we are trying to design with AI3 a, a space that is going to meet the instructional needs of students, given the growing enrollment, but also be fiscally responsible. We're not looking to overbuild the space. We recognize the importance of keeping this as cost-effective as possible for the taxpayer, but we also do want to make sure that we have appropriate learning spaces that are going to meet the long-term needs of the town. So, that's the balance. We had originally a significantly larger proposal, but we are trying to cut that back to build for what we, we know the needs are going to be.
I just had a question about the first floor. There's one sped OT room that's sort of far away from all the other sped OTs. Is that, is there a reason they're not closer together? So, that, yeah, that one, and then all the way down, that teeny-tiny.
Oh, the one down here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that right now is currently an office. It's way undersized for the office that it's used. We're still investigating what specifically that is used for, but the, the actual sped OT space, which we got here, it's a much larger space.
Yeah.
By locating right here on the first floor, maybe for the gym, makes a lot of sense.
But splitting it by grade level for each wing, is there still flexibility there if one class is just really big? You know, or will they, will, will you, one year, will one fourth-grade class have to be in the third-grade section? Or do you think there's enough flexibility where if a class jumps up a classroom or down a classroom, you can still handle that?
Right. Unfortunately, all the new added classrooms are on the second floor within the new wing. But to that point, all the classrooms are very similar as far as amenities, so they can shift and move depending on need. To that point, though, if third grade's on the first-floor wing over here, and it needs an additional classroom, it could go up the stairs adjacent to it, so it's not usually that far away. But unfortunately, we can't add like general classrooms to the first floor, either the third or the fifth-grade wing. So, but with all the amenities being the same, there is some flexibility as far as whose room is what room.
Okay, great. Yeah, like the neighborhoods, and I hate for it to be like split up just because of one big class.
And we, we have had to do that currently. Like, we've had years where we had to have a fourth grade downstairs, or we've moved bathrooms. So, there will probably be bubble years where we have to make some adjustments.
It sounds like it almost gives more flexibility with this plan, because there'll be a lot of.
Yeah, it will give us additional spaces, and we also want to make sure that our special education programs are centrally located. So, we, you know, we'd do what we do every year, is kind of look at what, what minor moves, what might we need to make for that year's enrollment.
So, if like the incoming third grade is bigger than the fourth grade, you'd probably just switch their neighborhoods completely, so that.
Probably not, because that's a, we, we have limited.
A lot of moving.
Limited staffing in the summer to do those moves.
Sorry, Matt.
But we would do, we might add a classroom, and we'd keep it as close as possible to that wing.
Other questions for? I would say, too, from, from the working groups, we have a, quite a few people on that. We have administrators, we have our facilities staff, we have Barry's on it as well from, from the business side, our special ed director, and each week we have, we run out of time because there's a lot of feedback and a lot of questions. So, I appreciate AI3 has been great about listening to this feedback and then going back and shifting plans and, and adjusting. So, I think at this point, we have a really good design and layout, at least for Freeman, that will improve programming and, and again, also give us the opportunity to incorporate more students, reconsider in a positive way the way we provide programming at the preschool, and, and give access to more collaboration among classrooms there. So, I think it's a really good design and ready to go forward with the next part of the planning.
And that is the perfect segue to our next steps.
Okay.
So, we're going to continue developing the floor plans. As you saw tonight, all those colored squares are going to become the hard-line drawings like what the existing was drawn. Going to continue developing the site plan, again, further, further nail down some of the details, make it a little bit more realistic. And what's going to happen is we're going to actually take those floor plans, the site plans, and all the narratives that have been generated, and we're going to actually send them out for estimating. So, that process is going to start. That way, we can start identifying a range of cost that this, that this will be based on these documents here. So, that's sort of what's going to go on behind the scenes. Our next meeting with you folks is scheduled for April 11th, so we'll update you again along the process, and really, again, targeting the March 14th community forum. We'll be running through a sort of a hybrid of our last meeting with you and this meeting. So, where we've been, some of the background information, enrollment, enrollment stuff, sort of a visioning overview, but then looking at, okay, here are possible floor plans, here's a possible site plan, and sort of just updating the community of the process to date. So, that's, that's our, our next steps for, for this process.
One thing, just about the March 14th date, we may have to change the location, just saying that we had a flooding issue in the library. At least that room's got to be ready by the 14th.
Wow.
We may, just so you know, we may need to move it to somewhere like the library here.
We're going to aim for that, we'll have a better idea. We just, the contractor just got to come.
Sarah, thoughts? I'm a school committee member right now.
So, we may just have to shift that location if it's not ready, and we'll get that.
If it is ready, it'll be a lovely new space with paint and carpeting.
That new carpet smell, it's going to be great.
Not a problem.
But we'll get, we'll work with you to get a promotional material together so we can advertise that.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions?
That's what the community forum was about, that you wanted to have an open, uh, I see, I didn't know that.
Library director.
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Appreciate it.
I like seeing my hands.
I can't, I need my reading.
My old eyes.
Like I'm walking, I can see these numbers.
That was the old study, yeah. That was the 2019. Yeah. So, this is what the first study imposed, and this is the new one.
That was one, I, that's what I was, I couldn't.
That's a Matt question, I do not have.
Hey, I'm a Matt. What's the square footage of the school now?
What's the square footage of the school now?
The existing built, like what we have now, what's our square footage?
Here, 96,000.
To the inch, please.
I want to say 96,430, but I don't know the inch. It's somewhere right around 96,400. Yolobay is.
He's right.
89,000.
Troy's saying you're right.
It'll be like 134.
Oh, you're necessarily right, he's right on that. All right, there you go.
Never a question.
Thank you.
So it's going to be 134.
All right, so next on the agenda for tonight is the school calendar. Typically, we try to vote the school calendar in February, early March so we can post it for parents who may be planning their summer camp, summer programming. So attached, you have a copy of the draft of the school calendar for 2023-24. It is pretty much very similar to the calendar we currently have for this year. The only major changes to next year's calendar are the two full PD days. We have had them often in October and January. Next year, the presidential primary is on March 5th. We have always closed for that because it's a high turnout day and we need to keep parking spaces available for the community and for student safety, having that many people on campus. So we're proposing that the March 5th presidential primary day be a professional development day for our staff, which allows us to locate a lot of the programming at HOD and again, free parking. The other PD day, we have often had a PD day after the October long weekend holiday. We are recommending changing that this year for two reasons. One is that we try very hard to have at least one common full day PD day with Rentham and Plainville. We have a lot of, as a small district with just two schools, we have a lot of departments that only have one or two members. Speech and language, we have three speech and language. We only have two art teachers, three phys ed teachers, two OT, one PT. And when we want to do rich, dedicated professional development programming, it's hard to afford to bring a consultant in for two people. So we try to have one common day where we can provide programming and bring together regional job-alike groups. Rentham has to close on October 24th because there's a special town election to approve, I believe it's Norfolk Tri-County building expansion? Yeah, so they've been asked to close that day. So that's the only PD day that they have that they could share with us, and Plainville is going to recommend that day as well. So that would be our common PD day. We only have three full days. One is before the school year starts, one would be now in October, and one would be for the presidential primary. Other than that, the calendar is really consistent with what it has been for a number of years. The first day of school for students would be August 29th, and the last day of school would be scheduled to be June 15th. We have to build in five snow days. So the five snow days would go the 14th to the 21st because the 19th is now a state holiday.
And here's the 13th of June.
My contacts are really dry, so whatever the date on the calendar is, is what it is.
It says the 13th, but I was just going to ask, that seems earlier. Usually it is the 15th, it's Saturday, but.
Yep, that would be the 180th student day. So we need a motion to vote to approve the calendar, and then any discussion or questions, we can go from there. So I don't know if you want to call for a motion, Madora?
I would love to call for a motion. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Any further discussion?
I'm just curious, would it make more sense to you partner more with Rentham and Plainville on professional development, or is it?
We would love to. Plainville, they don't have the same number of days as we do. So Plainville only has one full PD day on their calendar, so that they're sharing it with us. We do try to align some of our early release, and then sometimes we just share PD programming and have to do release days for staff. So sometimes we do, we might offer something here and they release their staff to come if it's not a PD day. But we try to share as much of the cost of PD as we can with the regional districts. And most of our summer offerings for PD, we also cost share and make them regional.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is the principal search. So I updated you at the last school committee meeting that Linda Balfour is retiring after 30 years serving as the principal of the H. Olive Day School. And we are just beginning the process of searching for a new principal. And we have a guest tonight, so welcome, guest. Be careful, there's a lot of cords, I don't want anyone to trip. So we are looking to move forward with a principal search. I think it's really, this is a critical decision and probably one of the most important decisions we'll be making as a district in the immediate future. Principals really are the core instructional leader of the building. They have a huge impact on school culture, school climate, supporting new curriculum initiatives and educational change. So it is a really critical, it's a critical and really important search. We want that to have significant community involvement. So we want opportunities for the staff at H. Olive Day to really be able to think about and articulate what qualities, skills, and experiences are essential for them and a new leader. We want parents in the community to also be able to contribute to developing that profile. And we really want to do an aggressive and broad search that we bring in the best pool of candidates that we can to fill this new position. At this point, I'm recommending that we go forward with a search consultant to help us with this process. What we are really looking for from a search consultant is the backend work. So the management of advertising. If we were to do this just internally, the cost of advertising will probably be run between $2,500 and $3,000. Every place that you place an ad has a fee, and there's a lot of time involved in that. What we would like the consultant to do is manage all the advertising, run the focus groups, put together the profile, and broadly advertise our position. We'd also like them to gather resumes and verify certification and qualifications of candidates. We would internally be setting up our own interview committee comprised of teachers, administrators, parents from the community. The consultant would bring to us all of the resumes for the committee to screen, choose and select candidates they want to interview. The consultant would then schedule the interviews, but they're really doing the management piece. It will be the local committee that makes the final decisions. Again, they would help the committee craft questions. And then they would also, if we choose after the interviews that we want to do a site visit, which is what KP is doing right now, and that would really be bringing the finalists in to spend time in the district to meet with parent groups, teacher groups, administrative groups, and for those groups to have a chance to provide feedback, they would coordinate that part. We got cost proposals from a number of different agencies. Some of the bigger agencies like Nezdeck are expensive to do an executive search. They're upwards of $15,000. That was cost prohibitive and really didn't meet our needs because we do want a significant local control of the process. So I'm recommending we move forward with the Collins Center for Public Management. They submitted a proposal. We gave them some feedback and they were able to scale it back significantly. The total cost for all of the consultancy services would be 8,000, and that would include all of the advertising. I think in your packet, I gave you the full proposal. We have checked references from a number of districts that they've worked with, and they've all been very positive. We've had good feedback from other people. They're timely, efficient, and have a broad network to support their advertising. So that would be my recommendation. We do have some funds in the HR budget remaining for advertising, and then I would be recommending later in the school year, a budget transfer. We have some savings in the substitute line that would probably be where we would transfer the funds. So I'm looking for a vote to recommend moving forward with the search consultant, and then we can have discussion or questions. So Madora, again, would you like to, can I get a motion to approve the search consultant as proposed?
So moved.
And a second. Okay, I'm sure there is further discussion, so further discussion?
I don't know, the director seems like a nice guy with the last name of Ward.
Have we done a conflict?
I have a quick question. Would they be involved in the interview process?
They would bring the candidates and they would help us to make sure that the questions are, you know, legal and appropriate. But we would probably have our own leaders facilitate the interviews. So probably our HR director and an administrator. They would probably meet the candidate and walk them into the room and all of that stuff, but they would not be running the interview.
Great, okay.
Would there be any way for you to, I know they're going to pick and choose and do all the references and stuff like that. Would there be a way for you to see all of the applications?
They will bring all of the candidates to us, but they will check to make sure they have appropriate licensure certification, and they would provide that information to the committee.
Just with your knowledge of the district, I want to make sure you're not missing.
Yeah, no, we will want all of the applicants, but what they would do is present the applicants to the search committee, and they might say, these three are missing licensure, these ones. So they'll vet them, but we will see all of the applicants.
And absent the use of this consultant, we would just be doing this in-house? Who would be tasked with that?
So that's one of the challenges, is we just right now within our office, there are so many things going on. We're in the middle of contract negotiations. We are in the middle of, as you just saw, this feasibility project. We have been the lucky winners of being selected for a CPR-coordinated program review, phase two of all of the civil rights standards in our district, which is hundreds of hours primarily on the HR and office staff, and we're down a principal. We have a principal out of medical leave, so our office staff is supporting that. So in terms of if we were to do it internally, I don't think we have the bandwidth to do the level of search that we really want to do for this position.
I agree with you completely, knowing that we run a lean administrative operation to begin with and that it's certainly stretched at this point. I think it's a fair and appropriate use of funds, particularly if we have the funds in the budget, so.
For an important, for a really important role.
Exactly, yeah.
What's the timeline look like? It's probably, I probably missed it.
It's in. Well, once we approve this, we'll move forward. I think we're hoping that we would have the profile and the advertising out and begin recruiting candidates in the back, I think it's in the very back of your packet. The hope is to do the interviews, and we might, this is just a proposal. We'll probably tweak it a little bit with them, but I'm hoping that interviews and things will be done by the end of April and we'll be ready to appoint somebody by early May.
Okay, that's what I was, it was a TBD, that's why I was asking what the end date is, but it would be sometime in May.
Yeah, they can't schedule the orientation until we approve it, and I let them know. But hopefully, we'll do that on an expedited timeline.
Okay, anything else? Okay, with that discussion behind us, all those in favor of approving the search consultant as proposed?
Aye.
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 All right, and the last thing is really fairly basic. We are members of the BIKO Collaborative. The BIKO Collaborative, we have 17 member districts. BIKO provides specialized programming for students with unique needs that we aren't able to provide programming for within the district. As a member district, we get discounted rates on tuition through BIKO. BIKO has had a couple of tough financial years. Happy to report, we're in much better shape than we were a couple of years ago, and that situation continues to improve. The Board of Directors was approached by another district, which was CCONC, and asked if they could become members of BIKO. We delayed their application at first because during the pandemic, BIKO didn't have capacity to really meet the demands of current members. But there is a financial advantage to bringing on another member district because most member districts prioritize placing students at BIKO when they have the opportunity to do that. The Board of Directors voted to approve CCONC becoming a member district. And as a result, it changes the collaborative agreement. The collaborative agreement has to be adjusted to include CCONC, and every member district school committee has to vote to approve the new collaborative agreement. So you have attached.
It's very fair and equitable.
Yes, you have attached the updated collaborative agreement. And again, it really highlights on the cover page, the memo from Jean Sullivan, who's the BIKO director, what was changed. They're minor, and again, it's really just to incorporate CCONC. So we need to vote to approve the new collaborative agreement, and then I have to have Madora sign the agreement page.
So we are looking for a motion to approve the updated BIKO collaborative agreement.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Maybe a suggestion that they make their language a little more general so that CCONC is the only one who has to go over this again.
Fair. Duly noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's everyone who has to do it.
Every school committee, everywhere. Everything's, everything, everything, everywhere, all of us.
I started that last night, yes. I haven't watched it yet.
I love her.
I'm sure everyone at home is excited to watch me do this.
They're waiting on the edge of their seat.
Do it in the moment.
Can I count in your ears as you try to write it?
We have subcommittee reports. Okay, moving on, giving Ingrid a break. Subcommittee reports, I think King Philip will be quick as our rep to King Philip is not here because she is with the King Philip School Committee doing her weather best to help them select a new superintendent. So I'm sure she'll be back with a juicy update at our next meeting. Policy subcommittee.
Policy, exciting. The three items on our agenda tonight, we're supposed to go to a vote. There were no changes. It would be the third reading since the last meeting, there were no changes. We will bring them, since they're not marked as voting, we'll bring them to the next meeting to vote. And we also, in our meeting just before this one, we did go through, as Ingrid mentioned, we are in the process of prepping for the audit of the civil rights policies, so we've been prioritizing those above all else. We went through, the last meeting, there was a question, this was back in November, entrance age, and there was a question around, there were, we were clarifying language around public school, but a question came up about private school. After we revisited the private school, if a student has been in private school, in a private kindergarten, they are not eligible unless they meet the age requirements. And Ingrid was saying the language around, I know, I don't think any of you have it in front of you, but one of the language about first grade, which is here, has been around for a long time to account for just that, that they have to be six years of age on or before August 31st to cover that language so that private schools are not permitted. Private kindergarten. It was a good question, though.
I appreciate you, listen, Steve. September 5th, 5th birthday in the house.
And then the other three, we talked about the equal employment opportunity, professional staff hiring, equal educational opportunities, and school choice. All of them are considered incidental changes, and we really were just making changes around updates to match the mask language, updated it to federal language for protected classes, just making all that consistent across the board. Added some classes there. We'll bring that again to the next meeting for a vote. And I think that covered that. That is all.
Great. Yeah, budget's not listed as a subcommittee tonight, but I'm sure we'll be back with you guys soon.
We'll be back.
You guys have nothing to do.
Okay, so a few new items, we are in the homestretch. We have a school partner renewal application from the wonderful Norfolk Recreation Department. So through Ann Proto, they are submitting to be a school partner once again. As you can all see from Exhibit 8, they do any number of amazing programs that are school adjacent or school related and then other, you know, kind of non-school related things as well. They were amazing partners during the pandemic. Just shout out to Ann and her staff again for helping the district make hybrid school work to a certain extent, to the extent that it could. Yeah, exactly. And so, and again, to all the fans out there listening about Norfolk Recreation, I believe today was the first day of registration for spring and summer programming.
It's like hunger games.
There you go. Get into it. So we would be looking for a motion to renew the school partner application of Norfolk Recreation. Beyond moved. Beyond, am I going to hit a beyond seconded?
Enthusiastic second.
Enthusiastic second, wonderful. Any further discussion?
No, just thank you.
Yes, thank you. Definitely. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to school committee meeting minutes. We need to approve the meeting minutes of our February 8th, 2023 meeting. I reviewed the, I did my homework, so I can give a pause if anybody else needs to review them real quickly. I'll defer to Sarah on Scrivener's errors.
I'm good.
I wasn't here, so.
Okay, there you go. All right, so we would be looking for a motion. All right, so we would be looking for a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of February 8th, 2023 from someone who was in attendance.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Okay, we are looking at our next, is that right?
That is the next regularly scheduled school committee. The budget hearing is March 15th.
Okay, are we not having a separate meeting after that?
We would have a meeting after, so it should, it should reflect March 15th. And that's a Wednesday.
So we will all ideally be there anyway and we will.
Yes.
Have a quick meeting subsequent to the budget presentation. Okay.
And we're going to do a policy vote.
Yeah, we might have a few like incidental items. We usually keep the agenda fairly open, so we have time to discuss any feedback from the public, but we probably will bring those other policies for vote that night that we've just had third meetings on.
Okay. Awesome. So final event of the evening's festivities, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is officially adjourned.